Welcome, everyone. Before we start the meeting, we will have a prayer by Councilman John Hensley, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Our hearts are heavy and broken tonight as we mourn the loss of one of the youngest members of our community, Mr. Darnell Gray. We pray that his family and friends may find peace in the midst of tragedy and comfort in their memories of happy times spent with this bright, smiling little boy. We also pray for, and are so thankful for, the officers and staff of our Jefferson City Police Department, for all local, state, and federal law enforcement officers, and for all of the volunteers from this community and beyond for their tireless dedication to finding Darnell. May they all be buoyed by the boundless gratitude and support of every resident of the city of Jefferson. We also mourn the lives taken at the Tree of Life Synagogue in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. We pray that in our lifetimes, we may see an end to violence and hatred inflicted upon our neighbors for no reason other than who they are, how they pray, and whom they love. Finally, as we enter the holiday season, we pray that all who travel may do so safely, that we each may be fortunate to enjoy happy, loving times with friends and family, and that those who are lonely or in pain may find relief, comfort, and fellowship. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Before we start the meeting, we will have a prayer by Councilman John Hensley, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our hearts are heavy and broken tonight as we mourn the loss of one of the youngest members of our community, Mr. Darnell Gray. We pray that his family and friends may find peace in the midst of tragedy and comfort in their memories of happy times spent with this bright, smiling little boy. We also pray for, and are so thankful for, the officers and staff of our Jefferson City Police Department, for all local, state, and federal law enforcement officers, and for all of the volunteers from this community and beyond for their tireless dedication to finding Darnell. May they all be buoyed by the boundless gratitude and support of every resident of the city of Jefferson. We also mourn the lives taken at the Tree of Life Synagogue in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. We pray that in our lifetimes, we may see an end to violence and hatred inflicted upon our neighbors for no reason other than who they are, how they pray, and whom they love. Finally, as we enter the holiday season, we pray that all who travel may do so safely, that we each may be fortunate to enjoy happy, loving times with friends and family, and that those who are lonely or in pain may find relief, comfort, and fellowship. Amen.
I will now call to order the Monday, November 5, 2018 City Council meeting. Councilman Hensley, thank you for that prayer and those words as our city has been through a rough week, and we do appreciate what you've said, and certainly prayers to the family, and thank you for your prayers. And Item 2, we have roll call, please, Mrs. Donaldson.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Item 3, is there a motion to adopt the agenda with the change of Item 15B Resolution 201821 moved to 4D?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Before we move on to miscellaneous agenda items, do we have any scouts in the audience today? Always like to recognize our scouts if they're here. All right. Item 4A, we have the Miss Fashionetta Cotillion Day Proclamation presented to Donna White Graham. So if everybody would like to come forward, I know we'll start with Mrs. White, and we have several distinguished guests here this evening as part of this, so we welcome all of you here tonight. Welcome.
Mayor Turgeon, members of the City Council of Jefferson City, Missouri, thank you for the opportunity to recognize the 2018 debutantes of the Miss Fashionetta Cotillion. The Miss Fashionetta Cotillion is the signature program of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority is an international Greek letter organization founded on the campus of Howard University in Washington, DC in 1908, established by African-American women, college-trained women. The organization's purpose is stated in Article 2 of our Constitution and bylaws. The purpose of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority is to cultivate and encourage high scholastic and ethical standards, to promote unity and friendship among college women, to study and help alleviate problems concerning girls and women in order to improve their social stature, to maintain a progressive interest in college life, and to be of service to all mankind. The GEO Ivy Foundation, in association with the Jefferson City Graduate Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, is proud to present to you the 2018 Miss Fashionetta Debutantes. I will ask each one to come and identify themselves and tell you briefly their plans for the future.
Hello.
Hi. I am Zoe Beavers. I am a senior at Jefferson City High School. I will be attending college so I can study sociology, so that I can be a press secretary for politicians.
Great.
Hi. My name is Joya Melvin. I am a junior at Jefferson City High School. I plan to attend either Howard or Hampton University, majoring in biomedical sciences, so I can become an obstetrician or gynecologist.
Hello. My name is Mariah Wilson, and I am a junior at Jefferson City High School, and I plan to go to Tennessee State University and major in pre-med.
Hello. I'm Shantia Brown, and I'm a junior at Jefferson City High School. I would like to attend Southern University State and continue my entrepreneurship.
Hello. My name is Yesnea Austin, and I am a senior at Jefferson City High School, and after high school, I plan on attending an HBCU. I just don't know which one yet, and I would like to major in journalism and minor in dance.
These young ladies have participated in a variety of quality experiences over the last several months, including career workshops, etiquette workshops, father-daughter outings, mother-daughter brunch, just to name a few of the activities. They have produced scholarly essays and completed community service hours. We are very proud to present them as young ladies of distinction in the 2015 Miss Fashionetta Cotillion.
Congratulations to all of you. We are so very proud. Thank you. And I do have a special proclamation that I will read with you, and then I'd like to get a photograph with everyone. This proclamation reads, "Whereas the Gamma Epsilon Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority of Jefferson City has sponsored its Miss Fashionetta Cotillion biannally since 1978, and whereas the Ivy Foundation has partnered with the Gamma Epsilon Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha to host the Miss Fashionetta Cotillion since 2005, and whereas among the goals of the Miss Fashionetta Cotillion are the promotion of social poise, grace, and the enhancement of self-esteem and self-confidence in the participating debutantes, and whereas the GEO Ivy Foundation and Gamma Epsilon Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority proudly presents its 2018 debutantes that are here this evening with us. Therefore, I, Kerry Turgeon, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, do hereby proclaim November 17, 2018, as Miss Fashionetta Cotillion Day in recognition of the Miss Fashionetta Cotillion debutantes and their achievements." So congratulations, and we're so very proud of you, and you have great things that you want to do in life, and I just encourage you to go after your dreams, and I'm very proud of each and every one of you, and it's an honor to have you here. So I'd love to get a picture. Donna, thank you for all of your work with this as well, and I know we have some families that are encouraging these young ladies as well, so happy to have you all here. Councilman Graham.
If I could just say just a few words to the ladies. Congratulations to each and every one of you. I'm sure you're gonna do fine. Just go out there and have fun. My daughter won this about 10 years ago, and certainly it helped her to propel to where she's at today. So to the ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, thank you for what you do with these young ladies in the community. Hats off to each and every one of you, so thank you.
Thank you. If the ladies would like to come forward, we'll have a picture and present a proclamation. And the council wants to come on up here? Next, we have a check presentation for $1,200 presented from Missouri American Water to the Jefferson City Fire Department, so I'll invite our representatives from Missouri American Water, along with Chief Schofield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. As you would imagine, the fire department has a very special and critical relationship with the water company that services most of our community. It's probably our most valuable tool in our arsenal to fight fires. So we apply every year for this grant through Missouri American Water Company, and I'll introduce first, and then talk a little bit more about what we're gonna use the grant monies for, but tonight, we're very fortunate to have Brent Haas from the water company and Mr. Brian Wilson, so I'll let them speak for just a moment.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. As Chief mentioned, each year, American Water issues grants to participating fire departments across the state of Missouri, and this is no exception, so this is a great relationship we have with the JCPD, or FD, I'm sorry, PD as well, but it really is our privilege to present this check, and you have not told me yet what you plan to use it for, so I'm dying to know as well.
So if you look at the screen, we have a picture of a specialized water device. We typically try to use something, these funds for something that is water-related, to keep the theme relevant, and so what these are is anti-tamper, anti-sabotage connection points, where we have a special spanner wrench key that allows us to have access to that when we need it, but keeps it free of debris or any type of other tampering.
Appreciate it.
Sometimes we see this, it's rare, but we do occasionally see it in places like parking
Now, Item C, we have something a little more serious of a topic. I'd like to introduce Barb Gordon and invite her forward with the Missouri Suicide Prevention
garages or alleyways, things like that, so that's what this is gonna be used for.
Wonderful. Group In a Flash to announce the Kevin Hines event on November 29, and you have a group Well, thank you again to Missouri American Water for your generosity. with you, so welcome, please. This is something very important for our community, and you're always so helpful in
Thank you.
Come forward. Thank you.
Good evening.
giving around the state, and we're very thankful to have that right here for Jefferson City
My name is Barb Gordon.
Fire Department.
We appreciate the opportunity.
I am part of a group that is striving to prevent suicide through education and heightened
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Well, I would love to get a picture with that big check that you have there, so if
awareness while uniting survivors and providing support to those affected by suicide in our
you all would like to come forward, and we'll have our council members come in and participate. Thank you.
local communities. Three years ago, I lost my husband to suicide. So before the one-year anniversary, a fundraiser was held and was very much supported by our local community. The goal of the fundraiser was to use the money to prevent other families from experiencing this tragedy. We have since formed the group In a Flash, Feel Loved and Stay Here, to help with that mission. In June, we partnered with Compass, where we were able to show the Kevin Hines documentary at Capital 8 Theaters in Jefferson City. Kevin jumped off the Golden Gate Bridge and survived. His mission now is to tell his story and help others understand the ripple effect of suicide. We have received tremendous response from the community, asking us to show the documentary again. We are fortunate to be able to bring Kevin Hines to Jefferson City. Our event will be held at the Miller Performing Arts Center on November 29. The evening will begin at 6:00 PM with book signing and speaking at 6:30 by Kevin Hines, and then the documentary will show at 7:00, which is 90 minutes long, and then questions and answers to follow. Our community partners are United Way, Council for Drug Free Youth, OSAGE Suicide Awareness Group Effort, and Missouri Mental Health Foundation. Thank you, and I hope everyone can come to this free event.
Thank you, Barb. Our heart goes out to you and to all the families that are here in support, and this is so very important and as difficult as it must be for you to stand at the podium and talk about that, I'm so very thankful that you're taking the time to be here and share this with us, so that we can share with our community and help each other out. That's really, you know, what we do at the city is really, we want to make sure that we can help each other, and this is one way that we can do that. So we are very grateful for your participation and that we're able to bring this film and book signing here to our community. So we sincerely thank you for that and for your courage to stand before us and all the families that we have, and we would love to get a picture with you up here so that we can share and you can put out on social media and the ways that you're promoting this, that we can do our part to get the word out to help suicide prevention.
Thank you.
So if you'd like to come forward, and we have some families in the audience as well, if everybody would like to come, and we can have the council come on up here, too.
We've got extra flyers here.
Oh, sure. And does council have any questions, too? I didn't ask any... Okay. All right, well, if you all would come on forward, and we'll get a picture together. All right, and we noted that that evening of November 29 is the mayor's Christmas tree lighting. We talked about that just now, but certainly afterwards, it sounds like even after the film, and they'll have a Q&amp;A, so I will plan after the mayor's tree lighting to stop over there and at least have that time to hear the Q&amp;A, so just mentioning that, as we know that gets to be a busy night, but hopefully, we can all make it over to the event after that. So thank you again. Now, we have Item D. We are going to take up Resolution 201821, so I will ask Mrs. Donaldson to read the resolution.
A resolution in support of the Rock Island Trail.
Okay. So at this time, I will ask Erin Graff-Rath to present on this resolution.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I may have to turn to Ryan for some answers on this as well, since I'm here, and Todd knows a lot of the backdrop, but I am here to say on behalf of the department, we certainly support this. We feel this is a great opportunity for outdoor and exercise enthusiasts to reap the benefits of Missouri trails. We think that it'll also help with local programming growth, as well as economic growth, so we certainly support this. It looks like, one of the notes that I did bring, it looks like in October of 2017, the Missouri Parks Association passed a resolution accepting Amarin's donation of the 144-mile stretch of Rock Island rail line to extend the Rock Island Trail across the state. It appears that's from Beaufort to the Windsor area. In March of 2018, the Conservation Federation of Missouri passed a resolution recommending acceptance of Amarin's donation of the eastern segment of the Rock Island Trail right-of-way, and then in September of 2018, our local Convention and Visitors Bureau sent a letter to Governor Parson and the Missouri State Parks in support of this topic as well.
All right, thank you, and I'll start by asking for a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Any further council discussion? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Resolution passes unanimously. Well, we also have some guests here this evening. I'd like to invite you both to the podium, and you can tell us a little bit about the Rock Island Trail project. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Greg Harris, Executive Director of Missouri Rock Island Trail.
Rick Path, President of MORT. And we're so grateful to be part of this citizen involvement of government here tonight, and grateful for your resolution. Missouri Rock Island Trail, you should have in front of you a map that shows the 144 miles that is to be donated by Amarin at the end of this year, and Missouri State Parks has been seeking this for a long time. I brought with me a document that describes how they almost got this, actually in 1993, so this is a long time coming. Some of our board members have been involved for a long, long time, and in 1993, instead of it happening, that was when Amarin and some other investors acquired the rail corridor to operate it as a rail line. And so since 2014, though, Missouri State Parks has been working to accept this corridor, and really, it's only been in the last year and a half that there was any question at all, and so we're trying to nudge this along, but communities all along the corridor will benefit greatly. Many of these communities were founded because of the railroad back in 1900 to 1904, and if you go through Mida and Argyle and on, Eldon, many other communities, they're really counting on this, so your support is a great help, as Missouri State Parks considers this gift of 144 miles from Amarin to make one of America's next great rail trails. You have right here the Katy Trail, the longest developed, fully-developed rail trail in the United States, 240 miles, and then nearly two years ago, in December 2016, another 100, or, excuse me, another 47 miles was added from Windsor to Pleasant Hill in greater Kansas City, and so this will extend then from Windsor on east all the way to Beaufort near Union. The closest place to you here in Jefferson City is Eugene, and I was first involved with some of the folks here tonight with Councilman Mahalovich, when Campo, the capital area metropolitan planning organizations, was discussing how to connect Jefferson City to the Rock Island Trail. And so we appreciate the great support of Jefferson City Parks. They've been a great help for a long time. We gave them an award in March at our annual meeting, and we thank you, Mayor and council, for your great support, and we have shirts for you, just like this, that are our expression of thanks. They are token value, so they're not a significant gift, but they're significant to us, and we hope that you'll value them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council comments or questions? All right, well, we appreciate you being here. Thank you, Councilman Mahalovich, for your dedication and work on this as well, and yes...
I'd like to also recognize in the room Diane Gillespie from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. She did, they did provide a letter of support, and it's a critical time in, across the way here in Missouri government to make a decision whether or not to accept this as a gift to the state of Missouri. We just, they just concluded three town hall meetings at Mida of Versailles and Owensville, and they were well-attended by trail supporters and people that had concerns. I would also say that there's two communities within Cole County, Henley and Eugene, and it'd be a bright spot in this county to have that as an access just 30, 20 miles away.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Greg and Rick, for being here, and also Diane from the CVB. I know that we're so thankful to have these trails, and we already know the Katy Trail and the importance that is to our community, so this will really help that also. Well, we will plan to get a picture here, if you'd like to come forward, and Councilman Mahalovich, if you want to come down here, and also Diane...
Some of our board members have been involved for a long, long time. And in 1993, instead of it happening, that was when Ameren and some other investors acquired the rail corridor to operate it as a rail line. And so, since 2014, though, Missouri State Parks has been working to accept this corridor. And really, it's only been in the last year and a half that there was any question at all. And so, we're trying to nudge this along. But communities all along the corridor will benefit greatly. Many of these communities were founded because of the railroad back in 1900 to 1904. And if you go through Meade and Argyle and on Eldon, many other communities, they're really counting on this. So your support is a great help, as Missouri State Parks considers this gift of 144 miles from Ameren to make one of America's next great rail trails. You have, right here, the Katy Trail, the longest developed, fully-developed rail trail in the United States, 240 miles. And then nearly two years ago, in December 2016, another 100... or, excuse me, another 47 miles was added from Windsor to Pleasant Hill and greater Kansas City. And so this will extend then from Windsor on east all the way to Beaufort near Union. The closest place to you here in Jefferson City is Eugene. And I was first involved with some of the folks here tonight with Councilman Mahalovich when Campo, the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organizations, was discussing how to connect Jefferson City to the Rock Island Trail. And so, we appreciate the great support of Jefferson City Parks. They've been a great help for a long time. We gave them an award in March at our annual meeting. And we thank you, Mayor and Council, for your great support. And we have shirts for you, just like this, that are our expression of thanks. They are token value, so they're not a significant gift. But they're significant to us, and we hope that you'll value them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council comments or questions? All right, well, we appreciate you being here. Thank you, Councilman Mahalovich, for your dedication and work on this as well. And, yes.
I'd like to also recognize in the room Diane Gillespie from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. She did... they did provide a letter of support. And it's a critical time and across the way here in Missouri government to make a decision whether or not to accept this as a gift to the state of Missouri. We just... they just concluded three town hall meetings at Meade of Versailles and Owensville, and they were well attended by trail supporters and people that had concerns. I would also say that there's two communities within Cole County, Henley and Eugene, and it'd be a bright spot in this county to have that as an access just 30, 20 miles away.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Greg and Rick, for being here. And also Diane from the CVB. I know that the... we're so thankful to have these trails, and we already know the Katy Trail and the importance that is to our communities, so this will really help that also. Well, we will plan to get a picture here, if you'd like to come forward, and Councilman Mahalovich, if you want to come down here, and also Diane.
And...
And...
Parks.
Oh, and Aaron for Parks as well. Thank you.
Oh, all the large, extra, whatever you got. Large or extra large, whatever you got. Doesn't matter.
I would, except we don't want to dislocation.
Yeah, it is almost Christmas season.
We can just put it that way, my arms are down.
You can hold it up.
I'll bring it back.
You got a large.
Man, that really improved the picture right there.
Yeah.
It's a blur.
Yeah.
We're getting this in right into the wires.
All right, very exciting project. Thank you. Item five, we have no public hearings. Item six, appointments by the mayor. We have item A. I will ask for a motion to approve the Heartland Port Authority appointments, which include Councilman Rick Mahalovich, Mr. Jim Jordan, and Mr. Roger Swartz. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rick, was that an aye as well?
Aye.
Can he vote since he's one of them? All right, that motion passes. So, we are pleased to appoint our three people to the Heartland Port Authority and working closely with the Chamber of Commerce and also Cole County and Callaway County, as they also have their appointees. So we'll look forward to getting updates from the chamber as this moves forward. And we are very excited that MoDOT approved the formation of a port authority here in central Missouri, and we are looking forward to that project moving forward. So, thank you, councilmen, for serving on that. And then we're also thankful for Mr. Jim Jordan and Mr. Roger Swartz.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Is there a term on this port authority?
There are terms.
What's the term?
And I don't have that in front of me. Do you know... do you have that information handy?
Is it a two-year, three-year? And would the process moving forward be like any other process, that someone would want to serve on a board or commission, that they would fill it out through City Hall? Would that be the same process?
It's different, since it's not necessarily a city board or commission, so it may be a different process, but we can certainly find out what that would be and get the information to you on the terms.
I'm just asking, just so that I know.
Sure.
In case someone asks me.
Those are good questions, right.
I'm gonna have to get back to... get back with you on the exact term. I'll send it out to the entire council.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants invited guests. We have none this evening. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. You can check out our regular meeting calendar at JeffersonCityMo.gov for a complete list of committee meetings. And I'll just start by saying that we have some... several events coming up for Veterans Day, so I hope that everybody has a chance to observe and thank a veteran. So basically, a week from today, on Monday, there will be a celebration at Freedom Corner, which is the old... previously the Warwick Village. So that will be held on Monday, November 12th. The Freedoms Corner East Side Association Veterans Tribute begins at 9:30 at Freedom Corner. Veterans Council also has an event that day at 11:00 at the American Legion on Tanner Bridge. So there are several, several events. Those are just a couple of them that are going on, but I encourage you to please find an event or something that is going on or in your own way to celebrate and appreciate and thank our veterans. And then, of course, tomorrow is Election Day, so polls open at 6:00 a.m. And so we encourage everyone to be out there and vote. And those are my announcements. Does council have any announcements? Councilman Hussey?
Public Works and Planning will meet Thursday at 7:30 a.m., but I will not be at the meeting, so Councilman Fitzwater will chair it, which I'm sure means the meeting will be over in less than an hour. Usually it takes two to three with me chairing it.
No pressure, but just in case. Councilman Prather?
I just wanted to announce the cancellation of our Finance Committee meeting, which was ... would normally be held on the 22nd.
Any other announcements? Okay. Item nine, Lincoln University Student Representative update, Ms. Carolyn Wanjaro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council as a whole. This past week, the Student Government Association hosted several events throughout the week to bring more awareness to breast cancer as well as domestic violence. And I would say those... all those events were successful, and the fundraisers that the different organizations had, they collected money, put money together, and gave it to some of the organizations that we have here at Jefferson City. And then next week, from the 12th through the 16th, the International Student Association will be hosting International Week at Lincoln University. And I would invite all of you guys to come out. There'll be food, there'll be a lot of dancing from different countries, so you get to have a sample of, I want to say, a good 20-plus countries at Lincoln. And then today, this evening, before I got here, I was at an event that was being hosted called What's at Stake in relation to the election tomorrow. And they were... the young lady who was facilitating the event was giving an overview of what to be... what to expect at the polls tomorrow. And they'll have transportation, so for those who, you know, you don't... if you don't know where your polling station is, or if you do know where your polling station is, which is going to be at the link, I believe, they'll have transportation from the student union over to the link. And that will be from 9:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wanjaro. And thank you for taking leadership on getting the word out to vote. Appreciate it. All right. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. I believe everybody signed up was for the previous presentations that we've made. Item 11, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, Bills in Reduce 2018-65.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning 2.08 acres of land addressed as 105 JC Drive from M2 General Industrial and RS3 Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First to orient you to the location of this request, up on the screen is a location map. The intersection of Highway 179 and Truman Boulevard Industrial Drive is located here just to the left-hand side of the screen. And so this property is highlighted toward the center of the screen. It's located on JC Drive, just a couple hundred feet north of Industrial Drive. The property has furniture on both JC Drive and West Main Street. The current zoning of the property is mostly an M2, which is an industrial zoning district. It also has the portion of the property with furniture on West Main Street is zoned an RS3, which is a single-family residential zoning district. This board would rezone the property to a C1, a neighborhood commercial zoning district. The stated purpose of the request for rezoning is to redevelop the property with an indoor sports practice facility. This request was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their October 11th meeting and is scheduled for a public hearing in front of the City Council on November 19th. I'd be happy to answer any question the council may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you. 2018-66.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $22,000 agreement with Rave Mobility for the purchase of Rave Mobility and a 50% cost share with Cole County.
Chief Schreider?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Clerk just gave a great introduction. As many of you know, we've worked for many years to this end to be in a position to purchase a mass notification system with the assistance of the purchasing component of the Finance Department, went through the proper process with the committee, and the subsequent recommendation of Rave Mobility. This, in addition to authorizing the purchase of Rave Mobility or that mass notification system, it also authorizes a 50% cost share with the county of Cole. Our portion, the 11,000, would be funded through a sales tax G. And with me tonight, Lieutenant Chad Steiferman, recently promoted. Lieutenant Chad Steiferman, he's capable of answering any questions regarding the vast capabilities of Rave. And Bill Farr is our honored guest, and Bill's an extremely important member of our public safety team within the county, and certainly could address that portion that covers the involvement of Cole County in this... in the process and the, hopefully, purchase of that very important equipment. So with that, we'd be happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you. And thank you for being here as well and your work on this project. Do you have anything to add this evening?
Just say you've got any questions about it.
Okay. And then also, Mr. Farr, thank you for being here on behalf of the county, so... thank you. Is there any council questions? Councilman Mahalovich?
I think this is a great thing. The chief has been wanting this for the last few years. It's been a pink sheet item, and I think it's especially noteworthy how the county and the city got to work together on this, that this is a better product and it'll be better us all sharing that and sharing the success. And I'm... I have the product as well. I use it for a notification from campus safety standpoint. And we've had many meetings with our 911 folks and county sheriff and city of Lynn. And I think it's really terrific. So if... I wouldn't mind you saying just a few words about what you think it will do for our response.
The great thing about Rave 911 is it's not just a Cole County venture. When we ventured into this, it was looking at the entire mid-Missouri and even out farther than that. So with the Rave 911 system, people will be able to subscribe for text message notifications for public safety alerts from the police department. And they can simply just sign up for that text message alert if they want to get notified of some sort of public safety event that is occurring within the city. Just as past, you know, week with the search for Darnell Gray, we could have used it to put out information in reference to that as well. But with Rave 911, we've got Smart 911, which was a component that we was... we wanted in this product. With that, members of the community can also go in and set up a profile on the Rave 911 website or through their application, mobile application, which then, anytime they call 911 and that cell phone number registers with our 911 communications equipment, the communications operators will be notified that that person has a Rave 911 Smart account, and it will populate us with whatever information they added to that account. So if they want to tell... if they call 911 and they want us to know that, you know, what their blood type is, that they have diabetes, that there's a key hidden underneath the brick in the front yard, whatever information they want us to know about them and the response to their house or where they live, we would get that... we would get that notification in the 911 center to aid in our response, to assist them. But that's not just our residents. That's... Rave 911 is used by multiple counties surrounding our jurisdiction, including Lynn, and we get access to all of that database information as well. So if one of those members from a different community was traveling through Jefferson City and called 911, we would get their Rave profile as well.
Councilwoman Wiseman?
Yes, can you tell me how this is going to be different from getting alerts from KRCG, KOMU, or any of the other local stations?
This is one that would be initiated by the police department that would send out this alert. And it wouldn't just be every... it would be more... it would be compared to more like the Amber Alert system, where it wouldn't just be mass notifications coming out on a regular basis, where you just get them and eventually they become so saturated, you ignore them. It would be very tailored alerts that when you got those, you would know something was going on. We wouldn't want to saturate the system too much.
So is this another subscribing system? Like, everybody's going to have to go in and subscribe to it? Like, if I want those... if I want those alerts, I'm going to have to go subscribe?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And then if I want my profile on there, I'm going to have to go, like, put my profile information in?
Correct.
And we're expecting the public to do that?
Between us and the county, we have got... we're working on a marketing campaign to go out and get people to be able to subscribe to it. Another thing the Rave 911 system will do for us is it also has got a lot of internal messaging capabilities for calling out the SWAT team or calling out negotiators. We can set up internal text messaging notification systems as well, much like the old paging systems. We'd be able to use it as a pager function also. And it's a one-stop shop for us to get information out. So it also integrates with all the major social media outlets. So if we put something out on Rave 911, it will simultaneously populate all of our social media databases as well.
Okay. Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. The data that residents would be putting into their accounts, would that be maintained by the company or by the police department?
That is maintained by Rave. This is all a web-based platform. Everything is out on Rave's... Rave site. The only part of the... the only component of this that would be installed at the police department would be the integration with the Smart 911 system, so our P-S app would be able to get that information and populate the dispatcher's computer screens.
I read the materials that were in our packet, and I didn't see it. Is there a provision that talks explicitly about what Rave is allowed to do with the data once they have it, beyond simply sending notifications to people who sign up?
I have not read anything about what they're going... what their provisions are for their terms-of-use contract agreement. I haven't read that.
Just curious, thank you very much.
Councilman Mahalovich?
I think this platform's expandable, and that's some of the thing that excites me about it, is it's the Rave Alert, which you're not purchasing... this doesn't purchase Rave Alert at this point. This is Rave 911, right?
We've got the text messaging alert, and we've got the Smart 911. We've got two components to it. We did not purchase the campus portion.
Rave... it's called Rave Guardian.
Rave Guardian. We did not... yeah, we did not get the Rave Guardian.
And we're looking at... we, meaning Lincoln University, has just completed an RFP to get Rave Guardian, so we're about to move forward with the five-year deal with Rave Guardian, which will allow them, if they're in Florida or wherever, to push the button that would ring back to us and can go back to the police in Miami. So we are purchasing Rave Guardian for the university, so...
And another component that comes with Rave is if we get a 911 call in from somebody that's got the accounts, the communications operator... somebody can't use the Rave system to text into 911 and report a crime. That's a totally separate project that we're currently working on implementing. But once a telephone 911 call was made via a mobile device, if it was just open line where they weren't talking to the communications operator, or they were just able to dial 911 and can't speak, the communications operator at that point can initiate a text message back to the person and then start engaging in texting communication with them, but that has to be initiated through Rave from the 911 operator after a actual phone call was made.
Councilman Mahalovich?
I certainly hope that as we implement this, that we look at the Rave Alert and seeing who would like to participate in that, because that's part of the strength, is that you have all the state office buildings, you have all these schools, and at least in my case, I can pull up the app and immediately have a medical aide or fire or active shooter. In our case, we're very concerned about all those things. And so we have... there were so many eyes and ears out there that we can notify you all in a hurry. And I think there's a lot of strength in that, as well as the 911 alerts.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Great presentation. Yes, you're welcome to come to the microphone.
You know, we started this... when we... the city and county partnered, and we did all the outdoor warning systems. That was almost a three-quarter of a million-dollar project. We saw the need then that we needed this mass notification. So we've looked at so many vendors through the years. The vendors we've selected now with the committee that we've met with, our partners are Boone County, Callaway County, Osage County, Ameren U.E. Nuclear Plant, all uses a very... use the very same thing. We thought it was very important that we're all in that same system, so we're one of kind of the last to buy in. But the work that has been done has been tremendous on this. We really feel this is sharp, a very, very needed, because, you know, whenever we did the outdoor warning system, a lot of those older systems went away because they were WWII dated. Now we have a lot of people, we can't hear the sirens when they go off. Well, they're outdoor warning sirens. And as far as mass notification on weather, if the National Weather Service doesn't give that to Channel 17, 13, whoever, they don't get the warning either. So we can put out our own on any other type of event that might come. So it's a great partnership. I go before the commission Wednesday morning, they're ready to sign. They put the money in the budget for the last several years waiting, so they're excited to have this done across the city and county too, so we appreciate the support.
It's a great partnership. Thank you, Mr. Farr. All right, any other comments? Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. 2018-67.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $941,242 and 60 cent agreement with Lampke Trenching and Excavating Incorporated for the Basin 17 Sanitary Relief Basin Project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, it's a construction contract with Lampke for just under $950,000, and the goal of it is really to restore peak wastewater flows underground to prevent backups and overflows in the system. I have to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. 2018-68.
An ordinance amending Section 8-13 overtime and compensatory time of the Personnel Policy Manual.
Chief Schrader?
Thank you. This bill amends Personnel Policy Manual and allows for a payment to the SWAT unit commander at the rate of six hours a month. It is not attached to an individual. It's a, six hours is attached to the person performing the duties, so there could be one each year. There could be three or four persons doing those duties within a year, although we want stability and uniformity, so that isn't likely. We understand FLSA and those mandates and what an exempt employee is and a non-exempt employee. We in the police department have nine exempt employees, and we're asking for this exception to the rule and allow for that one-time annual payment at the conclusion of the fiscal year. There have been a lot of messages communicated back and forth in the last month, and I would say that our basis for this is, well, there are several elements to it. First of all, that individual really works many, many more hours than the other exempt employees in this, in, within the parameters of that SWAT unit command. The person also is subject to call 24/7. There's nobody that can relieve that individual, so they really are not free for movement within the community. And I think the great, the best summary was one I wrote today, which also talked about the danger of the SWAT assignment. We had officers that were almost shot within the last 12 months doing a SWAT event. We also, the SWAT unit was involved in the search for Darnell, and in fact, it was our SWAT team that located Darnell and brought him home. And of course, I think, as I said in the pre-meeting, I just think maybe it's best that I answer questions rather than try to recap or summarize the substantial amount of information that has been shared. So with that, I'd certainly be happy to answer questions.
All right, are there any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Chief. 2018-69.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the definition of safety-sensitive function and substance abuse professional in Section 3-3 alcohol, drug, and controlled substance abuse policy of the Personnel Policy Manual.
All right, before I say to Mrs. Strop, I do want to back up on, on Chief Schrader that if you could be sure to thank all of the officers that did work. I know, like you mentioned, some of the things that they've been working on lately even more, but please extend our gratitude to all of their hard work.
I will do that, yes.
Thank you.
And our hearts go out to those that truly cared about Darnell.
Thank you.
As, I never saw a group of people committed to, to a task than I did for that, those six days. It was something to behold, and we wish we would have had a successful outcome, but as I said, we brought him home, and that's, that's the best we could hope for, I guess.
Thank you. Okay, 2018-69, Mrs. Strop.
Thank you. So the Federal Transit Administration regularly conducts the triennial review of our Transit Division, and each time they do, one of the things that they review is our drug and alcohol policy, and they've given us just some cleanup language that they've asked us to change in the Personnel Policy Manual, and that's what these changes are.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. 2018-70.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 29 of the Code of the City of Jefferson pertaining to rates for wastewater utilities.
Margie Miller or Matt Marash?
I'll go ahead and take it.
Okay, thank you.
So this bill will update the city code to align with our billing practice in that we only charge those customers that are actually connected to the sewer and not just where the sewer is available to them.
Any questions? 2018-71.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement with McClarty RE LLC pertaining to the repair of an existing box culvert on property addressed as 824 Southwest Boulevard.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Mayor. And this is a small development agreement with McClarty Auto Group that is owner of the Moccans Ford. They're undertaking a project on their lot there off Southwest Boulevard, and during that construction, they uncovered a box culvert. It's in a city easement. The lid fell in and a portion of it, and these funds would be able to restore that lid. They are under some timeframe to get the project going as they would like to pave this with asphalt in this time of year, as the plant will be closing soon. So I think there is also a request to suspend rules. Be happy to answer any questions, and the total agreement amounts $29,038.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Marash? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, as Mr. Marash indicated, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules. If I can get a second, I'll just give you a little bit of background.
And I think in this case, we just need a request, and unless there are any objections, we can suspend the rules. So seeing no objections, we will suspend the rules. And we'll have a third reading.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement with McClarty RE LLC pertaining to the repair of an existing box culvert on property addressed as 824 Southwest Boulevard.
Any further council questions or deliberation? Councilman Fitzwater?
I was just going to say, I appreciate the work that Matt has done on this. I did go out and look at the site, took some pictures. I've talked to Mr. Stegman, had a meeting with Mr. Bates just to get some additional background. I think this is justified for the city, and I'd appreciate folks' support so we can move forward with this.
And we appreciate Mr. Stegman and Mr. Bates being here this evening as well. Any other council deliberation? Roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 13, bill's pending 2018-63.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with AJ Lawn Care LLC for cemetery maintenance of Longview Cemetery, Old City Cemetery, and Woodland Cemetery.
Mrs. Abbott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the Clerk indicated, this is a new contract for the cemetery maintenance, and the existing contract expires November 30th. We're recommending a ward, the contract with AJ Lawn Care Services is a one-year contract with a option for a two-year renewal for a total of $99,300. The solicitation for bids went out to approximately 20 companies, and an advertisement in the News Tribune with the one sole bid that was received. The contract would begin December 1st. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilman Graham?
Do we know anything about AJ Lawn Care Services?
Yes, actually, there wasn't an evaluation completed. AJ Lawn Care has over 10 years of experience in lawn care services, has enough personnel and equipment to complete the job and previous experience in maintaining cemetery grounds at other locations. So we're confident that they'll be able to complete the job.
I was sort of just worried when you said only one person bidded on it, that just raised a red flag for me, but if we're comfortable with that, I'm fine.
Councilman Mahalovich?
Is that, is that correct, or it's kind of odd that it's $2,500 increase over the first year and then a lesser the second? It's not proportional, or it's kind of odd how that?
Um.
Are we requesting something different year two and three?
No, it's just to account for, you know, personnel and cost increase for each of those years. That's how I understand it.
Any further questions or deliberation? All right, roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2018-64.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Midstate Pipeline Maintenance LLC in the amount of $282,013 for the Jefferson City Chickadee and Mesa Stormwater Projects, Project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. And I think the Clerk indicated most of the information, but basically that this is a contract, a construction contract with Midstate Pipeline, who has done projects for the city in the past, and, and will replace failed pipes on Chickadee and Mesa.
Any questions? Discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes. Nothing on the informal. Item 15, Resolutions RS 2018-20.
A resolution of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, adopting the CDBG 2019 to 2023 Consolidated Plan and authorizing its submission to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Mrs. Abbott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just got a quick presentation on the 2019 to 2023 Consolidated Plan. The city receives annual funds from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development since 2004. We're an entitlement community, and based off of that status, we have to complete a, what's called a five-year strategic plan, which we embarked earlier this year on compiling information based off of needs assessment, market data, a local, local data such as the point in time homeless count, statistical data from the American Community Survey, and the comprehensive housing affordable, affordability strategy. Along with the planning process, we conducted several outreach such as surveys, public meetings, stakeholder meetings, and have developed our consolidate, our priority needs for our community, which the plan is roughly similar to the 2014 through 2018 Consolidated Plan, which those needs are the Down Payment Assistance Program, which we provide to low-to-moder income houses, households, excuse me, a minor home repair program, public infrastructure, demolition of dilapidated structures, and providing public services. We expect to, some of these programs to benefit citywide, while others, such as the infrastructure improvements, will benefit the low-to-moder income census data tracts. So those are the, the potential activities that we may undertake with CDBG funding over the five-year period between 2019 and 2023. For 2019 itself, we're anticipating receiving funding similar to 2018 allocation of $286,021. At this time, we're going to fund the down payment assistance for approximately 11 households, provide a minor home repair to approximately six households. Those are low-income residential households that may need help with energy efficiency updates, code repairs, or emergency provisions such as HVAC or water or wastewater laterals from the home to the main. We provide infrastructure improvements. That would be based on census tracts and demolition. We team up with nonprofit organizations such as River City Habitat to demolish structures, which low-income housing is reconstructed on the site, and then there's funding for administration of the program. Based on this information and with the citizen participation timeline, we are asking the council to approve the, or adopt the 2019 to 2023 Consolidated Plan, which at this time, we believe has to be submitted to HUD by November 16 of this year. So I will be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you for the presentation, Mrs. Abbott. Any questions or deliberation? Pardon me?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Is that a motion, Councilman Hussey?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item 16, Presentation from the Gallery on Other Topics. We don't have anyone signed up this evening. Item 17, Council and Staff Discussion Presentation Topics. Item 18, Any New Business? 19, Unfinished Business. We have Item A, A Motion to Reconsider Bill 2018-55. Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, we, we had received some information in regard to this issue. It did fail last time, six to four, I guess it was. There's been a lot of additional information come in since then, so I would like to make a motion to reconsider Bill 2018-055.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Roll call, or Councilman Fitzwater?
Just like to hear what kind of information is, is come, not to get specific, but just in general, what's, what's come to your way?
Okay.
Sure, Councilman Fitzwater?
I've just gotten a number of calls, mostly pro. There have been some additional con. I went back through, and I think Mr. Barron made a very detailed presentation from the activities of planning and zoning. Went back through that, and when I looked at the property again, I have a call into the developer. He's got family medical issues, so we have not touched base. Did talk to Mr. Bates a little bit about the project again, talked to Matt about it. I think there are folks in the community that both support and oppose the project. I'm not sure that came out clear last time, and I just think it's worth the council taking a second look. I mean, we set a process up to give us an opportunity to do that. I think it's very important for Ward 4 to have that debate. It's a piece of property that at some point is going to have something on it. I think this is probably a good opportunity, fits the community, and I just think council, I would like council to take one more opportunity to take a look at it, so. Based on everything that's happened over the last two weeks, that's why I've asked for that.
Councilman Prather?
Do you know if the developer will reach out to the neighbors just to have another discussion with them to make sure that all the information gets out there and they're all well-informed?
My understanding I'm getting is secondhand, is he did everything he could the first time to reach out to as many folks as possible. My understanding, again, I'm getting it secondhand because we've not been able to touch base yet, is he is willing to go the extra mile to set, talk to people. Obviously, it'll have to be opened up for another public hearing. to set, talk to people. Obviously, it'll have to be opened up for another public hearing. And, you know, I think Matt made a presentation in regard to the stormwater issue, which was some of the concern of the people that contacted me after I talked to them about that. And, the, you know, the fact that it's probably going to end up better than what it currently is, once it's developed and the stormwater is pushed, that, you know, there's a lot of factors in play. But, my understanding is that he is willing to work with the neighborhood and try to address any questions there are. And then, you know, we as council, if we do reopen it, we'll have to make a decision at that point.
And, I appreciate it being brought up for reconsideration. And, I think there is some new information that wasn't necessarily presented. And, I did reach out as well to the developer after such a close six to four vote and had a conversation and was a bit surprised because there was, other than a couple of things that were brought up, such as stormwater that seemed to have been addressed, and traffic and parking. Parking seemed to be a big issue, but there was a mention that the garages are built in there to prevent parking on the street. And, other than just not wanting rental in the area, which is near one of the largest concentrations of rental in the Fourth Ward and an area that's been very well-maintained, I was surprised, too, and really did not speak up. And, I regret that I didn't speak up even at the last council meeting, more being a rental resident myself in the Fourth Ward. And, I spent 16 years living within a few blocks of this development as well. So, very familiar with the area in that it was very well-kept up, both from the neighborhood and from the rental property. And, we also have a letter from the president of the, the current president of the West Point Homeowners Association, Section 6. I don't know if that went to the entire council, or maybe did that, I don't know if that went to everyone. But, if not, I can make sure that it did, from Mr. Nun, that has a show of support as well. So, and then, when it came unanimously out of P and Z, so there were a lot of factors that I think warrant looking at it again, and I'm happy to do that. So, I'm glad that the council is maybe willing to take that up again. Councilman Graham?
Two things for me. One is, if the council, we do decide to bring this back up again, I do hope that we're able to, as Fourth Ward council members, that we're able to have a conversation with both sides that could be held here in these chambers. I have spoken with both parties, the one who opposes and the one who supports. From the time the meeting was over from planning and zoning, I only heard those who opposed the project. I did not hear at any one, up until the time we had voted, anyone who supported that project. And, now, after the fact, I'm hearing that people supported the project, but no one came forward to say that we support the project when we voted that night. That concerns me. But, I am willing to have a conversation with both sides to listen and hopefully come some type of understanding before we take the official vote. At this point, I'm still a no. But, I am willing to have a conversation with, with both sides to hopefully come to some type of understanding. And then, at that point, you know, my vote may change. But, right now, I am still a no. I've, I'm learning that there's two different associations in that one area, which makes it, you know, sort of tough as well, too. But, I am willing to host a meeting here. And, I've been going back and forth, trying to set up a date and time, but it's just not working. So, I think as council members, we set a date and time, and hopefully those who can attend, can attend. And, the developer will be able to attend as well, too. So, but I was very concerned for me to hear the opposing side only. Even at planning and zoning, they came out and opposed it. At city council meeting, they came out and opposed it. Nobody supported it. So, and now, for me to hear that, for me, that's sort of disturbing. So, I'll leave it at that, and we can vote on what we're going to vote on tonight.
Thank you. And, I also understand, I think, that after the unanimous vote out of P and Z, that I heard from a couple of people who said, well, knowing that it came out unanimously, they didn't realize the importance of coming to council. And, although we know the process and it's very important to have the public here, that maybe not all understand the importance of being here as well for the deliberation, even though planning and zoning sometimes can be like a temperature of how, how the item may end up here, but it doesn't always mean that. So, even though it passed unanimously there, it doesn't necessarily mean it would here as well. Any other questions or deliberation on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Nate.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Motion passes. And, since this is a planning and zoning matter, typically, it would be taken up at the next city council meeting. But, Mr. Moulman, would you give us the timeline of when this bill will be taken up?
Sure. Because it's a planning and zoning matter under Chapter 89, we need to advertise this for a minimum of 15 days. Looking at the schedule, that would make the next council meeting unavailable. And, so, we're looking at a public hearing at the December 3rd city council meeting and a vote on the matter at that same meeting, December 3rd.
Okay. So, this bill will be voted on December 3rd.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just to add to Mr. Moulman, we would also send out notices to our property owners within 185 feet and post a sign on the property in the normal manner.
Thank you. Mr. Barron?
And, one other thing.
Yes.
Councilman Fitzwater, can you and I get together after this meeting to try and establish a date and time for us to come together with all three sides, the developer, the opposed and the unopposed side, that we have a meeting here in these chambers and go from there? Because I would like to have a conversation with everybody together. So, it's a very important project.
All right. Thank you. So, item 20, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Everybody vote tomorrow. Thank you.